Everybody, to tonight's city council meeting. If you'll all please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, I'm going to call on Councilman Brown to give tonight's invocation.
If you would, bow your head, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we're told that we're more than two are gathered, you are also. Thanks for being here with us tonight, being in the hearts and minds of the elected leaders of this city, being in the hearts and minds of the people that are attending. Thank you for all the many blessings that we enjoy every day in this beautiful city of Fairhope. Most importantly, protect the men and women that give us the freedoms that we enjoy every day. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Brown. If I had noticed a lay leader of your church standing in the back room, I may have called on him to come give the invocation tonight, but good job. All right. First order of business will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session and agenda meetings which were held, and the, I'm sorry, and the special budget work session which was held on September 16th. Do you have any additions, deletions, changes to those minutes? Hearing none, I will accept a motion to approve them as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Thank you, Council. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Uh-uh, where's mine? I just now realized I don't have a microphone.
Let me share.
Oh, there it is. Excellent.
Thank you, Council President. Okay. And I'm just now getting my PowerPoint up. Okay. First, I would like to thank the community. We have captured our 26,000 like for our city Facebook, so I thought that was really impressive. So, thank you for that. And if you haven't liked us or followed us on the city Facebook, we've created more Facebook accounts for the different departments, and we really appreciate you following those and keeping up to date on what's happening in those departments. Okay, starting this Thursday is our annual farmer's market, and it will be behind the Fairhope Public Library. With fall in full swing, there are so many delicious and healthy foods in season, greens, herbs, sweet potatoes, the list goes on. Residents can enjoy live music, a variety of vegetables and produce, and leave with a fresh bouquet of flowers. Fairhope Public Library Youth Service invites the kids to come out each week for activities starting at four. And at our Nick Center, the upcoming events, they have a health fair starting on October 3rd. Also, their fall fashion show will be held on October 16th. Call the center for details on those events, and I'll keep them posted, and I'll give you an update on the next work session as well. Coming this week, we have Wednesday is bingo night, and I need to do that because I love bingo. And Thursday is karaoke. Friday is financial day. They're keeping it really, really active at the Nick Center. They're doing a great job. At the museum, it's finding new ways to get out history to our visitors and residents. New tours are being made available targeting home school children and conference attendees at the grand. The first class of brand-new tours will be with Rhodes Scholars, and this was set up with the help of the historical liaison at the grand. And that will happen, I guess, this week. This is Tom Cool. It is with the best wishes that we say goodbye to Tom Cool this week as he retires. Tom has been with the city for 20 years and is personally responsible for taking our Parks and Recs Department to its current heights and terrific level of service for the community. Last Friday, Tom has attended over 100 Fairhope Pirate Football games. He is a presence that we will absolutely miss. Tom, we all congratulate you on the next chapter in your life.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And with happy news, we are thrilled to welcome one of our own, Pat White, as the new Director of Parks and Recreation. White has spent a total of seven point, seven and a half years with the city. After five-year stint in the early 90s, he rejoined the Parks and Recs Department as a crew leader, supervising department staff and making improvements thanks to the, his extensive agronomy experience. With his background, including 10 seasons in minor league baseball with the Birmingham Barons and Mobile Bay Bears, he has also serves, served as the Parks Director for the City of Daphne. A turf agronomy instructor at Coastal Alabama Community College, and an eight-year member of the Alabama Turf Grass Association, where he has served as the Director as well as the President. He is responsible for the City of Fairhope's success in bringing our soil to a 92% organic level, and the goal is 100%. We will assume, Tom, he will assume Tom's duty on October 1st, and so let's please welcome Pat White. Yesterday was the 32nd Annual Alabama Coastal Cleanup, and my husband and I always arrive a little late, and I'll get up there that early, so the only things highlighted still to do were on Marianne Beach Park down Highway 1, and boy, did we hit the motherlode. We filled both of our bags and just, we had a really good time. We were able to fill it up pretty fast. There were, there was a huge team down there going up and down Highway 1 and at the park cleaning up, but we have another successful day in the books. Tonight, on the agenda, number five is dealing with a veto I had from last council meetings, ordinance to establish the monthly salary for the mayor and council members, which passed. In the back of the council chambers, you will find an updated budget presentation which includes the details of this on the last two pages. The main issues I had with this ordinance is the option to participate in Plan One with no monthly payment. This listed on the ordinance lacked transparency, and now that it's, it has been communicated what this plan really includes, I want to make sure that it is addressed and that we talk about it more. This plan currently, when approved the way it was, perpetuates a free family insurance package which is no longer available to new hires as of 2017, when I encourage council to change this financially unsustainable, unsustainable health package for taxpayers. The city now has a premium employees pay for family insurance, and it is very competitive. This, the most important part of this change is it eliminates the 100% participation when there is a zero premium, and increases the likelihood of spouses keeping their own employer insurance policy. That is the real savings, not the comparison of the annual cost. Serving as a council member is a part-time job. The City of Fairhope does not and never has offered insurance to part-time employees. Elected officials are service positions. Just because it's always been done that way is the same mentality that has prevented this administration from moving forward on many positive changes in an effort to do better. Since Auburn University was hired and begun updating our compensation study for employees and elected officials, I've asked council to wait until this is completed. Even if the whole study is not completed, we can have them complete the elected officials' portion by the deadline, February 25th of next year. We can no longer afford to do things just because it's always been done that way. Voting for a benefit that is better than that of the new hires is no different than Congress. I had to throw that one in for a little laugh. Anyway, taxpayers deserve better, and that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. Next item on tonight's agenda will be public participation for agenda items. Remember, if you want to address the council for non-agenda items, there is another place at the end of tonight's agenda for that. So if you would like to approach the council on Agenda Items 5 or 8 through 11, if you'll come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Item 6 and Item 7 are public hearings, so if you were here to speak to Item 6 or 7, you would do so at the time of those agenda items. So Items 5 or 8 through 11. Seeing no one, I will close, public participation, and remind you once again that you will have another opportunity to address the council during Item 12 of tonight's meeting. Councilman, your comments, please. Councilman Robinson?
Sure. I don't have any of my own comments tonight, but I'd like to turn my time over to Mr. Randy Fiddler with the Kiwanis Club. He has a presentation he'd like to make.
Yep. Okay, thank you, Jake. My name's Randy Fiddler. I'm here on the behalf of the Fairhope Kiwanis Club. I would like to thank the City of Fairhope for partnering with the Kiwanis Club in the restoration of the Fells Toddler Park, and I'm here to present a $2,600 check to the city. We just recently purchased a new seesaw. The seesaw is in, it's just we're waiting on it to be installed. This is actually our third piece of equipment that we've purchased. In addition to the new equipment, we've also cleaned and painted, painted the older equipment, and we plan to build a small pavilion there at the park in the coming year. We have two main fundraisers for these projects. We have the Best of the Bay Gumbo Championship, which is coming up October the 19th. It's right here in Fairhope at the Coastal Community College. Generally speaking, we have 40 to 50 cooking teams there. There's live music, there's things for the kids to do. We have, there'll be some arts and crafts booths set up there, so it's a family fun event, so we hope that all of you can be there. And if you'd like more information, you can go to our Facebook page, or just Google Fairhope Kiwanis and just follow a link, and it's right there. In addition to Gumbo, we have our 20th Annual Golf Tournament coming up, which many of you have actually played in that tournament, and I do appreciate that, we do. It's coming up in April. Generally, it's the last Friday in April, and appreciate all of you. It'll be at Quell Creek again this year like it was last year. These two fundraisers over the past five years has helped us donate over $100,000 to the local youth in our community. That's a number that I know all of our Kiwanis members are very proud of, and so we, we want to thank the community for supporting us in those, in those endeavors. In closing, I want to congratulate Tom Cool. He is always, on his retirement, Tom has always worked very hard with us in the different service projects that we've had. He's always been great and helpful, and we wish you the best, Tom. Thank you. Lastly, would like to thank Wyatt Hurley, who actually is the one who is installing the equipment at the, at the park. Really do appreciate him and everything that he's helped us with what we're doing. And again, thanks to the City of Fairhope, and thanks to all of you and what you do to make this a great city. Thanks.
Mr. Fiddler, do you have a check to be presented?
Yes.
Mayor and Councilman Robinson?
I'll come down.
Accept that on the city's behalf.
I'll take my picture.
So it's actually 26, 18, 17 seconds.
Awesome.
You want to get out here in the front?
Sure.
There we go.
Yeah, because we can.
Yeah.
Get close.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
And other than wishing Tom a happy retirement, I don't have any other comments. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Councilman Conyers?
I'd just like to plug that Gumbo event Randy was up here mentioning in October. That's a great event. Come out and support the Kiwanis Club. And also, Tom, congratulations on your retirement. I noticed your retirement party announcement had a lot of snowy scenes, so I don't know if that was maybe a, just trying to plant a subliminal message for you that.
Where your head is going to be really chilly, but congratulations.
Councilman Brown?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody that exercised their right to vote last Tuesday on the referendum for the school tax district. I am happy that it passed. I'm pleased to see for the next generation of Fairhope kids that they get to see the benefit of what this will do for the Fairhope Five Schools. That's it.
Councilman Boone?
I as well would like to give a good ad a boy to Brother Tom. He'll be well but sorely missed, and just his real pure pleasure to work with. I wish him the best in his retirement. Thank you, Tom.
I want to congratulate you, Tom, and Pat. We look forward to working with you as well. And I want to recognize the School Board President, Mr. Cecil Christenberry. Mr. Christenberry, did you have something you want to approach? I don't want to keep you till the end of the meeting. I have a feeling you've got something on your mind. I know you're a quiet man and not much to express your opinions, but I thought I'd give you the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate it. I'm Cecil Christenberry, 212 Jeff Davis Street, but I'm here tonight representing the Baldwin County School Board, actually, our district, District 6. I came to thank you for what you've done to allow the people to speak, and the people spoke. And do you realize what happened last Tuesday? I mean, this is, this is a game changer for this district, and I know, no one likes property taxes or taxes at all, but I'm telling you, I'm here to tell you how wonderful this is going to be for our five schools in this feeder. We're proud of Spanish Ford. They almost didn't pass it, but they did, and we're thankful for that. And I think Mayor Haygood is scratching his head because I think he was making phone calls on Tuesday night after the election results, and we wish him the best in any other district. There's been some confusion, though. This is our entire feeder pattern, and of course, the vote took place in a big area, and it was positive, but you guys, thank you for allowing this to happen, and I really, kudos to Robert Brown and Ken Cole with the EAC. We've been so proud of what you've done over the last number of years supporting this school, our schools, but this is, these are our children. Do you realize that? You know that. And I had someone say, well, I've already educated my children, I shouldn't have to educate yours. Well, that's the most selfish thing somebody could ever say, in my opinion. I think it's great that we're here. This is a 30-year tax, and if anybody doubts accountability, please come see me because we will go to Baimanett or to Loxley, and we'll meet with John Wilson. It's a line item. It will be completely transparent. We hear that word, but it's going to be accountable every penny for it, and the money collected will be spent in our five schools. And I'm so proud I could burst, and thank you for not ma, making me wait till the end of this wonderful meeting. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecil.
Okay, with that, I will close. Council comments, and we will move to Item 5 on tonight's agenda. This is concerning the mayor's veto of ordinance number 1659, or the ordinance to establish the monthly salaries for the mayor and council members for the City of Fairhope. Council members, I would maybe ask, I'm going to ask for a motion. What we do is we'll ask for a motion to override the veto. If it fails, for a motion or a lack of a second, we'll move on. If, if we get a motion in a second during the discussion phase of this, I would ask you that you, you address your views or opinions during the discussion phase of that. So, if I may, I will ask for a motion.
Council President?
Yes.
Will you please read the veto?
Yes. Can do that. The veto says, Dear Council President Burrell and Councilmen, as I have stated publicly, this ordinance lacks transparency, and the decision to adjust next term's elected official salaries does not have to be made until Monday, February 25th, 2020. Therefore, I am exercising my right as mayor to veto this decision. Auburn University has been hired and began updating the City of Fairhope's compensation study for all city and utility employees, mayor and council, which will provide us with an unbiased third-party comparison of like municipalities. Considering this fact, I believe this important decision should wait until the study is completed with the condition that the elected official positions come back before February 25th, 2020. Section 4 of the ordinance, the mayor and the members of the council will have the option of participating in the City of Fairhope's group health insurance plan. Option 1 is not a transparent expense to taxpayers. As this option, grandfather's in future elected officials and participating in free family health insurance at no cost, and with very little deductible for an entire household with dependents under 26 years of age. I recommended changing this benefit in 2017, a council and council approved, which resulted in new hires being offered Plan 2. The new plan, I don't think that meant, benefit meant for the elected officials. The new plan is competitive for attracting great employees and financially sustainable for taxpayers. Why would council approve elected officials participating in a better family health insurance package than new hires? The expense of the benefit was $17,227.17 and $15,576 for FY 2019, ending on September 30th, 2019. Part-time employees has never received any health insurance benefits. The total expense for this term's free family insurance for elected officials will be a minimum of $374,000. When there is any adjustment made for city or utility employees, council requires a formal comp process. For taxpayer's sake, I recommend having Auburn University finish the study. It was hired to accomplish before future elected compensation packages are approved by council. Sincerely, Mayor Karen Wilson. Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion to override the veto.
So moved. Second.
Okay, I do have a motion and a second discussion. We can go one into the other, or you can just jump in if you have a discussion.
Yeah, so if this veto is not overridden by the council, it goes back to the old compensation package. We get the same salary and the same benefits as we would. Councilman Conyers, we've been discussing this for months and months. It probably was brought up six months ago. Councilman Conyers did his homework. I'll be glad to share the sheet of, let's see, 2, 4, 6, 8, 10, 12, 14, 16, 18, about 18 different municipalities around the state, all of the surrounding municipalities with like-sized population, given their council salary and whether insurance, and I'll be glad to share this. This is not unheard of.
Any other comments?
I guess I could take up time, but it'd just be the same things really what Councilman Brown had to say. I mean, it's.
I guess I've got a few comments. I mean, I did spend a decent amount of time putting this, putting this together with the initial intent to try and do this well in advance of, of the next political cycle. I didn't want this to become a political conversation, because right now, you know, part of my thought is I haven't made up my mind whether or not I'm running for reelection, so I feel like I'm not, not doing this for me. It's really, this was all about trying to raise the salary for the mayor, and just when I was doing the research, found out that, you know, the council salary is where they were. All I'm proposing, different for the council, is $200 a month, about $53,000 for the mayor's salary. The council is, does have free insurance currently, as does the mayor. That began in 1992, so for the last 27 years, that's been in place. So, if we were going to adjust it and take it to, to what the current employees or new hires are paying, that's $275 a month for family coverage, $75 a month for individual. I could see, I could see doing that, and I think that would make sense, but at the same time, you would want to maintain, I guess, I would want to maintain the council compensation where it is, and then I'm proposing a 200 a month, so if you were to increase that salary to offset that, it's sort of six in one, half dozen in the other. And at the end of the day, I think that all the, all the conversation comes down to a difference of opinion over, you know, that $275 a month, which is not going to change a whole lot in the, in the grand scheme of things.
I do want to just mention on, on that premium, the, the main savings is that when you have a cost for health insurance, this does increase when, when somebody comes on board, the likelihood of a spouse keeping their own insurance. If it's free family insurance for everyone, then it's 100% participation, and it's, it was an unsustainable benefit before, and that's probably why y'all agreed that we needed to change it. There is not another, when you talk about comps and time being spent on comps, none of those comps have free family insurance, and that's the lion's share of the benefit. So, I mean, if you're strictly looking at salaries, I didn't have a problem with the salaries. I think that it's better to have an experienced person do it formally, but it is the, the free family insurance that was the issue.
Right. We're going to get back to council comments now. Were you finished? Councilman Conyers?
I mean, pretty much. I would say that I don't, I don't disagree with, with the mayor's point about the, being on, on the same term as new hires, but again, you get to that, you know, we're really talking about the $275, and if you were going to offset that by moving that to salary, I still feel like it's sort of six in one, half dozen in the other, but that's just, that's my opinion.
I'll weigh in some thoughts. First of all, like Councilman Conyers said, I think a lot of the public, when they've read this, has thought this is something new. We're not voting ourselves insurance. That already exists, and it goes back 27 years to 1992. The only change was that we would be voting the next council a $200 a month raise, and we would be voting whomever is the next mayor, a $53,000 raise. And the thought was, and I believe this is what you intended, Councilman Conyers, when you proposed all this, was that, you know, you would get qualified candidates. Technically, the mayor of Fairhope is classified as a part-time job, and we keep hearing, well, we're working part-time. Well, but nobody believes it's a part-time job. We feel it's a full-time job, the mayor's job is, and the mayor should be duly compensated for that. We could leave the ordinance as it is now, and we wouldn't get the $200 a month, but the insurance wouldn't, it wouldn't change. Like I said, this, this goes back to ordinances that were passed in public meetings, not behind closed doors. I, I keep hearing a lack of transparency, but these were all passed in open meetings. When something's not transparent, there's something done behind closed doors, and these have been done in open meetings. These discussions were held always in open meetings, and so, you know, I don't look at it as doing something for myself, but to try to attract more people to serve. And as far as the value goes, I was told at the last meeting that it was a, it's going to be a $17,000 and something dollar value. I'll tell you what my insurance cost if I was to get it through my company. I could get it for $168 twice a month. That came, that comes out to $4,007 a year. If you added that to what I make as a council member, I still wouldn't even be the highest-paid council member in Baldwin County. So, it's not, and I keep hearing, you know, we serve, I keep being told that you don't serve for the money. Well, that's not about the money. That's not enough money to make me want to serve, you know? But if it goes a little bit further in maybe encouraging somebody else to serve and making it worth their time, because yes, council members are classified as a part-time job, and it's not an ordinary part-time job. You might not work 40 hours every week, but you work every weekend, and you work every night. And I'm not trying to justify it, but anybody sitting up here will tell you, it is not your ordinary part-time job. So with that, the other, the other thing that I think is that, as we're trying to figure out what happens, or what the next group of council members and mayor are paid, I think about, this city's never taken anything away from somebody that had a benefit. If you're a full-time employee and you had benefits, when we introduce the second insurance option, you're still given free family insurance. It was only for new. So if you go back to someone, I'll, I'll take the late Mike Ford. So if you go back to someone, I'll, I'll take the late Mike Ford, for instance, who'd been serving on the council for 31 years. Let's just say, for instance, he was running, and let's say that he was to win. You're taking something away from someone, that you're taking something away that they had. You're actually giving them a pay cut, and that's what would happen, is if you're, if you're, if you participate at $275 a month, you're actually getting a pay cut. And what we're trying to do is give people a $200 a month raise, a pretty paltry amount, in my opinion. Something that we did four years ago to try to get our council salary back up to what, I think we were seventh lowest paid in the county in 2012. We tried to bring it up incrementally to something more reasonable, and I think that's all we were trying to accomplish here. Nobody's trying to give themselves a big benefit. I think everybody up here could go out and get insurance. And yes, if you offer it for free, everybody's gonna participate. I don't argue with that. But I think that a lot has been made of this that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not the truth. And all of these other local cities are allowed to participate in their city's health plan, so they're not paying the $17,000. I don't know exactly what it would cost them monthly or what it does cost them, but it's certainly not $17,000 a year. Nobody's getting a $17,000 a year value in insurance, to them. Every individual's circumstances are different, but I doubt anybody up here is getting that kind of value. And I'll be quiet and leave the floor open for more council discussion. I have a motion and a second hearing. No more discussion. Clerk, if you'll call the question.
Council President?
Aye.
Place two?
Nay.
Place three?
Aye.
Place four?
Aye.
Place five?
Aye. Okay. Motion passes and the veto is overridden. Thank you, council. Item number six is a public hearing, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to rezone the property of Myrtle Bung, trustee of the Myrtle F. Bung Living Trust, from M1 Light Industrial District to a planned unit development. This property is generally located on the west side of South Section Street, just south of Pecan Avenue and Fairhope Avenue, and a parcel contains 5.22 acres, more or less. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. King.
And council members, thank you. And council members, Mr. Jeffries couldn't be with us here tonight, so I'm presenting this item for the first reading. And as council president introduced, this is a zoning change from M1 to a planned unit development. And the name of this development would be the Summer Lane PUD. And the basic background you'll see is on the screen before you hear. I'll show you a zoning map here in just a moment. I'll mention it here, call attention to it here in just a moment, the requested density of the subdivision that would accompany this PUD, should it be approved, is 2.87 units per acre. And of course, this is south of Pecan Avenue on the west side of Section Street. So I have the zoning map here on the left of the screen, aerial image on the right. We'll refer back to this in just a moment. Call your attention on the zoning map to the zoning, the zoning districts nearby. This is northwest, almost directly across the street from the Public Works facility. Screen here is the site plan of the proposed development, the proposed subdivision that would go forward pending approval of this PUD. Mr. Steve Pumphrey with Dewberry Engineers is here with us tonight, and he can answer questions on behalf of the applicant. Council members, you'll recall, there are nine conditions of approval, or nine review criteria that staff goes through per the zoning ordinance. What we'll do here is explain, we'll point out just a couple of the nine criteria to bring to your and the, and the public's attention. First is the compliance with the comprehensive plan. And in short, this innovative is one of the words used for PUDs, and, and Mr. Pumphrey can probably explain that in more eloquent detail here about the layout of the proposed subdivision. Also, its proximity to downtown, which supports walkable communities. On the screen here and in your packet are the basic elements of what would be the future subdivision, and you notice the setbacks and the other criteria. What I'd call your attention to here is notice the maximum lot coverage is 32.5%. And to give the council some perspective, the lot coverage of an R1, a very low-density district, is 40%. The most prominent zoning district we have in town is R2 medium-density single-family, which is 37%. And then your R3, high-density single-families, are 35%. Talking about the character of their surrounding property, what I'll mention here and call to the council's attention is we talked about just a moment ago how this is a 2.87, approximately 2.87 unit per acre in density. To reference that and how that works into the surrounding community, I'll call your attention back here to the zoning map. R2 medium-density single-family has an allowable development density of approximately 4.15 units per acre. R1 is approximately 2.9 units per acre, and R3 is about 5.5 units per acre. So considerably lower density development compared to the surrounding neighborhoods, or to the surrounding neighborhood.
Mr. King, can I ask you to repeat?
Yes, sir.
Did you, did you say that it was less than, you didn't say it like this, but I believe the numbers I heard, that it is less dense than R1?
Yes, sir. Very slightly less dense.
2.87 versus?
2.87 approximately, and the allowable development density of an R1 would be 2.9. Yes, sir. And we talked about the surrounding property as one of the review criteria for a zoning change. And the infrastructure and impacts on natural resources, of course, most of that is handled from a technical review during the subdivision stage. But just will, at the staff level, we'll reiterate that the stormwater requirements are part of the subdivision regulations would be enforced if this went through as a subdivision. And the additional, item six through, six through nine, again, I'll call to the council's attention that, at this stage, traffic study is not performed, but a traffic study would be performed at the subdivision stage to address any roadway improvements that might be necessary. And of course, the, well, we addressed the density earlier, and counsel the innovative design, we emphasized that for a PUD, the pedestrian-friendly environment, all factors within the comprehensive plan. Council members, this is the exact slideshow that was used during the, during the, during the planning commission review of the, of this item. So I need to verbalize and correct for you some of the items on here. As the case was being reviewed and going through the review process, there were varieties issues, a variety of issues that were identified that might result in ultimately requiring the need for waivers of the subdivision process. Those items were addressed with the planning commission. So essentially, the items related to gated entrance, that was removed. The desire for private roads and non-paved roads, that was removed. And also, a possible non-compliance of green space, that was removed during the planning commission discussion. And this is a, there's a FEMA issue that is, that will be addressed in the future if the developer discovers they may possibly have some additional buildable area. We went through that in great detail on the planning commission process. If the developer thought they had the ability to add some additional buildable area, they would have the option, if this PUD is approved, to come back and amend it. And council members, you'll see on the slide here, and I apologize for this error here, is that when it was brought to the planning commission, the initial staff recommendation was for denial. But as we mentioned earlier, that the waiver issues seen on this slide right here were all addressed and basically removed at the request of the developer during the planning commission. So therefore, the staff recommendation verbalized into the record for the planning commission, and then also as approval, and the planning commission recommended approval as well. So the wording of the approval that's in your packet is correct and reflects what occurred during the planning commission meeting. As council members, before we turn it over to Mr. Pumphrey, I'm happy to answer questions on behalf of, on behalf of staff.
Questions for staff?
So the, and I'm sorry, I can't download my packets. I'm trying to read this, but gravel roads, for example, that's normally not allowed, but that's been requested, and it's, it's pervious, so that's beneficial for the drainage that they have in that area, correct?
Yes, sir. And the subdivision, and this, and that's a great question, Councilman, this is a little confusion, confusing, because we do have to take into account the requirements of the subdivision regulations when examining a site plan that accompanies a PUD request. And so, as initially submitted, the desire was to have non-paved roads. The subdivision regulations require all lots to front upon paved, publicly maintained streets. And so that was a request that was removed during the planning commission and reflected, and, and so the recommendation that's in your packet reflects what occurs in the planning commission. And I can read that off the, off the packet if I need to.
Mr. King, the, we have a lift station adjacent to this property. Will we still have rights of ingress, egress to that property?
Great question, Council President. And I'll call everyone's attention to, it's easier to see on the zoning map. You'll see the notch in the property, and so that lift station is actually a separate piece of city property, and so this development must, will go around it and won't affect the city's access to that lift station.
It almost looks like there's a road. Now, forgive me, I'm like Jimmy, my MacBook's not working real good tonight. I couldn't download the picture, so I'm looking at a kind of a faded graphic. It looks like there's a road that stubs out to Section Street to the north of the lift station. Is that, am I imagining things there?
And Council President, I'm, maybe, maybe Richard Peterson can jump in here and, and help me, but I believe there may be a culvert and a driveway there, and that may be what you're seeing in the aerial image.
No, I'm looking at the drawing for the, for the PUD.
You're right, that's an entrance, Jack.
So there's an entrance on Section and on Summer Lane?
And on Summer, yeah, whatever.
Oh, yes, sir. You're talking about the development itself.
Yeah, I'm talking about the development itself.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I could've swore I read also in here that it didn't mention the need, I didn't, I'm sorry, not need, incorrect word. Did it, I see it on second, it does say Section Street and Summer Lane.
Yes, sir. And council members, I put that slide back on the screen. It may be a bit easier to see. So you can see the primary entrance connects to Section Street, and then there is a secondary entrance, a secondary connector to existing Summer Lane, satisfies the connectivity requirements of the subdivision regulations.
Which is very rare these days. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So the developer was able to take care of that, was able to address that, and happy to answer any other questions of the council, and we can flip through the slides as much as we need, council. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Council, so I have Richard Peterson here to assist if we have any questions about the lift station. And I appreciate Richard's help.
I just wanted to mention that one of the conditions of the easement was to screen the lift station from, and provide that subsequent driveway, since we did screen it.
Will you require people to roll their window up as they approach Section Street entrance?
Well, we're working very hard on load control right now, so we're hopeful that by the time this project gets underway, we won't have to worry about that anymore. I'm not saying we won't have to worry about it, I'm saying we hope we won't have to worry about it.
Okay. Any questions for staff? Does the engineer request to speak now?
Well, I won't repeat all of that, other than to say, we're excited about the project. I hope what you see is something that you can get excited about. This is a little bit different type look than what you normally see. It's rare that I get a project like this to represent, to be quite honest. I like it. It was, it was nice when we hit the table, and I said, this is one that I can, I can sink my teeth into, and I can stand before you and represent it in a way I think that, you know, I think it's a good thing for, for Fairhope. It's not your typical block-type layout. It's a very community-oriented type development. It's a small, compact development. We did have to shrink it a little bit. We did run into a problem with the FEMA map that's got an error in the map, so we're pursuing that somewhat, but to, to address it now, we just removed all lots from that erroneous section. So if it stays, then our layout will work like it is. If we were able to have success with FEMA, to have that fixed, then we would acquire some more property that we would come back to you with an adjusted plan at that time. But right now, we're just gonna move forward with the plan that you see. We did, as, not to go through every item, but we took out items that the planning commission were concerned about, all these waivers. So we really, it wasn't an issue for our developer to take those out. You know, we did have, you can even see on the plan, we had brick pavers that we initially were gonna look at, and being that it'd be a public street, that was a no-no, so we will not, we'll either do a stamped concrete, or we just won't do it at all. But we'll work with the Public Works for whatever product we can, we can do there. So again, I think that, other than that lift station in the front, that our client would love, that hopefully will not be a problem either, but we'll shield it from our access in and out, on our side, and, and we're just gonna make the best of that situation. But I'll be glad to answer any questions that you, that you may have.
You answered one of them, but the gravel is just for the access around the rear of the houses, correct?
And that may change. Right now, we have, we would put it on ribbon curb so that we can contain the gravel that would only be in the rear access. We are now looking at the possibility of just paving it. As you may know, the site has got, it's got some, some fall across that site. So when you put, start putting gravel, even with some ribbon curb on it, it could, it could have a tendency to migrate. So we may end up putting pavement there.
If you go with stamped concrete, or, you know, I like the brick, but I guess I'll kinda look at Beaufort, and I'll look at the city attorney here and say, I think the city probably doesn't want the maintenance on that, but can we not, can, is there any kind of partnership you could enter into for, say, certain sections of public roads that you will not be responsible for maintaining, if you were to wanna keep that feature?
I, I think that was not possible, but I'll defer to staff. That was part of the big argument.
Not possible?
Yeah, it was part of the big discussion that we had.
What about the P3 comes up all the time?
And so, council, to answer that question, that was, when talking with our Public Works staff, it was not desirable to accept, to accept and dedicate the brick pavers.
Not desirable and not allowed is two different things.
Yes, sir, because of the, because of the maintenance issues and truck traffic on that. What I would say, council, is that most likely is, is typical, is that's very often that we let these lay over to the next meeting. We can be better prepared to address that when we bring it back for final consideration.
And we are gonna talk Public Works about maybe doing some brick pavers in the parallel parking areas that we have. The roadway itself would be paved to what standards, but then maybe use some brick pavers. One again, that'd be one of the LID components that we can add to the project, I think would be good. It'd look good to the project, it'd be good for the project, so we're looking at that.
I mean, 'cause I could see you running into the same issue with stamped concrete. I like that idea as well, but is the city gonna pay for that when our own garbage truck breaks it up?
Yeah. So I don't know that we're gonna end up doing that either, but we're exploring those.
All right.
Anything else?
Councilman Brown's shaking his head over there. I'm gonna throw something at him in a minute. Any other questions?
We, by the way, did have a community meeting on this, had a good turnout for it. We did have a community turnout at our planning commission meeting. Somebody thought I paid them all, because most of them spoke in favor of the project, so I don't, I rarely even get that type of...
That was, that's suspicious. I heard that.
You were there, yeah, so. I had nothing to do with that. But, but, but again, unless they've changed their mind, and they're here tonight and want to say otherwise, at that, at that meeting, they were favorably for this project, and I think that was a plus also. This is, this is certainly far better than what could be done on this site with an M1. I don't think anybody would deny that. And, and a bonus to it, we've got a really nice-looking project, not just your typical subdivision, so it's all a plus in my mind.
Well, I have the property to the south of it, and I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, good.
You didn't sign it for the public hearing, councilman, down there.
Just thought I'd throw, interject that.
All right. We'll let this lay over for our final adoption until our next regularly scheduled council meeting, so thank you for that. Oh, oh, well, we will, we will open the public hearing. I'm sorry, all that talk, I thought we had one. I will open the public hearing if you want to speak to this PUD. Okay, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll let this lay over until the next council meeting for final adoption. Okay, item seven is a public hearing, and this is an application for a lounge liquor license by Noel Broughton for NOBODA, Noboda, maybe, doing business as LWCC located at 14 North Church Street in Fairhope Avenue, Fairhope Avenue or Fairhope, Alabama. A long night. I will entertain, I will open the public hearing. See, and Noel, I will close the public hearing, and I will, do we need to let this lay over, clerk? lay over, clerk? It's not, it's not an ordinance, all right? We can consider this?
Correct.
Okay. I will ask Chief Hollinghead, is there any reason you know of to deny this?
Yes.
I believe they're basically going from a, they have, serving less food, so they had to change their type of liquor license, is that correct, to a lounge liquor license, from like a restaurant liquor license?
It was also advertised as required.
Okay. Any questions, council? Okay, I will entertain a motion for approval of the application.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, thank you, council. Item eight is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of United States Environmental Services for remedial cleanup of mercury from a well that was being prepared for abandonment for the Water Department. It's a non-budgeted project, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract with a cost of $15,656.34. I will entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Just one question, when I, when I hear about mercury, and I hear how fabulous our water is, where did the mercury come from?
Well, we went to abandon the well, there was equipment in there, it was very, very old, it's been sitting there for about longer than I've even been in the city. It was in the equipment itself, it was a flow meter.
Barry.
And it was just a small bit, I, we were all the money, it came back at $15,000. So, but it was in the equipment itself, not the water, not the well.
Got you. Council, any other questions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the selection, any expense, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries, you're welcome. Item nine is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approved the procurement of professional show design and fireworks for the city of Fairhope from Zambelli Fireworks, with a cost not to exceed $18,900 for the New Year's Eve Fireworks Show 2019, and the Fourth of July Fireworks Show in 2020. I'll entertain a motion for this procurement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 10 is a resolution, the city of Fairhope approves the procurement of substation 15-kilovolt vacuum circuit breakers and regulators for Project EL 003-17, or the upgrade to Fairhope Electric Systems substations and distribution circuitry to Siemens Industry for the $4 million three-year capital improvement plan to upgrade substations. These 15-kilovolt vacuum circuit breakers will not exceed $157,619. The total regulators will not exceed $416,220. Mike?
Council Mayor, this is the result of, we went out for RFP, noticed an issue through the city attorney on the terms and conditions of that, came back and found out that we could actually just go out for a bid on these, and these were the results of that bid process. We did recommend Siemens, because they were the ones that could meet our price and our time constraints for this project. I did check today, and the numbers are exactly the same as what was in Siemens' original winning bid.
Questions, Mike? Okay. I'll entertain a motion for the procurement.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. Item 11 is a resolution to award bid number 29-19 for citywide resurfacing and striping projects to Asphalt Services Incorporated, with a total bid proposal of $406,226.54. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. I guess you see the project bid summary in your package, it's like items A through M. I'm just trying to find, this was, these were 2019 items, right? We're just coming in right at the tail end, is that right? Okay, I see him shaking his head. Is that? Is that equalling, it's a little under the budget, right? A little bit under the budgeted amount, maybe? 381, 386, 406? I take that back, it's exactly what was budgeted.
Yeah, and, and just so you know, there is included the Parks and Recreation Road in here, where we're actually surfacing the access utility road there at the soccer complex, and in my heart, it will always be Tom Cool Drive going into the future, just in memory for him, no signage present. And I will note that we bid each of these projects as standalone projects, so we can adjust to the budget, which is a capital, as well as the four and seven cents tax. We did not use all of the four and seven cents tax available to us. And we excluded item K, these were unpaved alleys that ran between Nichols and Farland and Nichols and Dogwood, they're a maintenance headache, but the price was just really high on that across the board, and being budget-conscious. The other thing is, we are not recommending the ad-aliment to upgrade the striping to thermoplast, that would be about a $26,000 increase, just to go from a paint striping to a thermoplast. So the 406 covers all items except K, and does not recommend the exercise of the upgrade in the striping.
I was trying to, there's quite a bit here, and it was, they were the lowest bidder.
Yes, no matter how you calculated it, yes, sir.
Any further questions? Any further discussion, council? Clerk, we have a motion and a second, all right?
Yes, you do.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor of awarding the bid, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Thank you.
Thank you, motion carries. Public participation, if you have anything else to bring forth to the council, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Okay, see you, Noah, and I will close public participation, entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, we're adjourned, thank you, council.